Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am David Vitale, President of the Chicago Board of Education, and on behalf of my fellow board members, I welcome you to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is September 25th, 2013, and we're holding this month's meeting here at the Board Chambers at 125 South Clark. I'd like to note that Dr. Escuita and CEO Barbara Bird Bennett are not here today due to prior commitments. We will follow our regular order of the meeting today, and we will vote on both public agenda and executive session items after we return from closed session. Madam Secretary, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The regular meeting of Wednesday, September 25, 2013, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Beenan?
Here.
Dr. Heinz?
Here.
Vice President Reese?
Here.
Members App?
Here.
And Member Quazo?
Here.
President Vitale?
Here.
Six members present. There is a quorum, and I would also like to recognize James Bevly, our General Counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. You know, the first day of school is a milestone day for students, parents, teachers, and principals, and being there on the first day sets the tone for the rest of the school year and is such an important factor in student success for that, for this coming school year. This year, our first-day attendance rate was 93.5 percent across the district. In some of our schools, that rate was a remarkable 100 percent. We know perfect attendance doesn't happen by accident, and when a school achieves perfect attendance, it is due to the collaborative effort of principals, teachers, students, and of course, our families. Today, we have the privilege of honoring three schools who achieved perfect day-one attendance this school year, and we are joined by Principals Brian Metcalf of the Eugene Field Elementary School, Bogdan Shkumbova of the Disney Two Magnet High School, and Carolyn Egert of DeVry University Advantage Academy High School. Congratulations to all of you on this really incredible accomplishment, and we'd like you to share a little bit of your experience with us.
Good morning. I'm Bogdan Shkumbova, the principal at Disney Two Magnet School. First of all, thank you for the honor today and the recognition for this particular accomplishment. This is a very important milestone for our school, not only the first day of school, but also the first day of our expanded high school program. We are very, very proud of this. I credit this accomplishment to the very thoughtful engagement plan that my team put together last spring, where we have involved families and students throughout the summer in many events and a full welcoming week of team-building activities. I also would like to thank to many of the leadership team here who have been involved supporting us throughout the expansion project. Special thanks to our network chief, Ann Alvarado. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, board members. Thank you for this opportunity and the recognition that Field Elementary School is receiving. I would like to say that it is in part due to my assistant principal and one of our parents, Mrs. Fairley, who helped spearhead this initiative, and it just went back to one simple word for us: expectation. And so, it was our expectation that students should be in school on the first day, ready to learn, and so with that, we did our own PR, getting the word out simultaneously with the board, and so it proved to serve us well, and so thank you again for the recognition.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Carolyn Egert, and it is my privilege and honor to serve as the principal of the DeVry University Advantage Academy. I stand here today for our students, for it is their dedication and hard work to their education that will earn them an advantage that will serve them well for the rest of their lives. I stand here today for our parents. We know we cannot do it alone, and it is through their commitment to our partnership that each and every one of our students sees success. And finally, I stand here for our teachers, for they are dedicated to every individual student meeting their needs and seeing that they have what they need. It is their commitment to providing engaging and relevant curriculum every day that is what keeps our students coming to school, not only on the first day, but every day. And finally, I'd like to thank the board for this recognition. Our school community has been working very hard, and we appreciate the support. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for the leadership you've provided to your schools and on this particular effort. You set a terrific example for all of our schools, and some of the experiences and practices you used to achieve this, hopefully, we'll get, you'll get to share with others, but it's a great accomplishment and a great example for all of our schools to proceed. We actually had a pretty good year, but you really put the bar up there as high as it can go, so really, congratulations. We really appreciate your effort. Thank you, thank you very much for coming down this morning.
Thank you.
We will now proceed with the business portion of the meeting. Last May, the Chicago Public School System released a draft 10-year, draft 10-year Education Facilities Master Plan to improve our school facilities, to address the district's most pressing current and future capital needs, and to ensure a diversity of quality school options for students and families in every community. Today, CPS Chief Transformation Officer Todd Babbitts will present an update on the Education Facilities Master Plan based on extensive community input. This will serve as our blueprint for continuing to improve our school facilities and to deliver a high-quality education to every student in every school in the district. Todd?
Good morning, President Vitale and members of the board. Here to talk to you about the Educational Facilities Master Plan, which, there we go. It's a document that's required by law. SB 630 requires approval of the Educational Facilities Master Plan by October 1st. It includes community area-level plans and individual school master plans with options for addressing the facility and space needs for each facility operated by the district over a 10-year period. We've identified 30 different community areas for purposes of analysis within the plan. We did publish a draft on May 1st, which was prior to the board's vote on school actions and also prior to the release of our five-year action plan. It needs to be updated every five years, with updates every two and a half years after the approval of the initial tenure plan, including an update on progress. And we've received a lot of feedback from the Chicago Educational Facilities Task Force. One piece of that feedback was that we really should be considering this to be a living document, and we have included living document language in the plan itself. We do intend to update it over time. There are some additional requirements in the law regarding its contents. One of those is the district's guiding educational goals and standards, a brief description of the types of instructional programs and services in each school, the process, procedure, and timeline for community participation, the enrollment capacity and utilization rates of each of our schools, historical and projected grade-by-grade enrollment for a 10-year period, assessments of individual buildings and site conditions, community analysis, an analysis of the facility needs and requirements of the district, and identification of potential sources of funding. One of the things to note is that the current version of the plan that we're asking you to approve includes the 10-year enrollment projections based on enrollment projections for this year. We will soon have 20th-day enrollment numbers, and so we have an intention to update that over time. We had a lot of community engagement, both prior to the release of the draft and subsequent to the release of the draft. Prior to the draft, we did surveys of all of our school principals and local school council chairpersons. We reviewed all of the existing Community Action Council strategic plans. We held community engagement forums. We reached out to sister agencies to identify what plans they had that might affect our enrollment projections. The Community Educational Facilities Task Force held a series of meetings. This Commission on School Utilization also held a series of meetings that drew tens of thousands of people. We promoted a text as in campaign and a social media site in order to collect additional feedback, and that all fed into our process for the draft, and some of that continued prior to the release, after the release of the draft. After we released the draft, there was a public mailbox that was available for comments. We continued the text as in campaign on CTA bus routes. We handed out surveys at each of the 25 meetings that we attended, and we tried to cover all of the constituencies that we could. We went to the Parent Involvement Advisory Board, the Parent Advisory Council Collaboratives, the Local School Council Advisory Board. We attended meetings of community action councils. We held a meeting of citywide clergy. We held a student forum. We had a series of meetings across the city, targeted LSE members, and then also five public hearings that were held between September 3rd and September 11th. We heard a lot from the communities, including a desire to invest in our neighborhood schools, and so we strengthened language to emphasize the importance of our neighborhood schools. We heard a lot about class sizes. We heard about reflecting more explicitly the five-year action plan, and so we added educational goals and standards that tie more explicitly to that action plan. There were questions raised about the moratorium on school closures, and we reinforced that there are no plans for more closures within the next five years. There were questions about building reuse, and so we added information about the advisory committee that was announced by the City of Chicago. There were questions about overcrowding and how we think about prioritization, and we added new guidelines to provide more directional guidance, and also updated our overcrowding information based on this year's 10th-day enrollment, and as I said, we'll be updating that for 20th-day enrollment soon. There were questions about our assessments and the cost to obtain and maintain our buildings. We provided increased transparency into how we think about that, and also updated the information to reflect the updated assessments that are now on a two-year rolling cycle. Right now, there are 25 assessments that have not yet been approved internally, but we provided information that we had with respect to all of our buildings. And we heard about specific priorities on a community-by-community basis, and we tried to reflect those in the community sections of the plan, again, 30 different community In terms of what we want to deliver, it's 21st-century learning environments. We believe that every school should be located in a high-quality educational facility that provides a positive learning and teaching environment and a platform for students within the building to reach their full potential. And so, it calls for over a 10-year period, improving all of our facilities so that they provide safe, healthy, and supportive learning environments, so that they provide sufficient space for all of the students in the building, equitable access to advanced technology, playlots for the elementary schools that have space for them, modern computer and science labs, air conditioning, ADA accessibility, libraries, and then the specialized equipment to deliver the specialized programs in some of our schools, which includes dedicated spaces, specialized laboratories, unique equipment, and enhanced technology. We also express a goal of expanding high-quality options throughout the city. And this includes expansions of our selective enrollment schools. Right now, we've got about 2,500 students that we believe qualify for selective enrollment schools that are not getting in right now due to a misbalance between supply and demand. More IB programs, more STEM programs, science, technology, engineering, and math. We've heard from several of our communities desires for more CTE programs, career and technical education programs, and also service leadership or military schools. We state in the plan that to the extent feasible, we'd like to explore co-locating schools so that we can provide more options within our current footprint. And we'd also calls for expansions for our off-track youth, both those that are out of the district right now that we might be able to bring back in, and those that are maybe headed off-track, having specialized programs to better address the needs of those students. The plan also discusses the magnitude of our overcrowding and calls for focused efforts to alleviate overcrowding at our neighborhood schools that are currently stretched to capacity. As I stated before, it sets forth a range of potential options and guidelines for how to prioritize among them, including a focus on low-cost solutions where appropriate, and provides guidance on how we would think about providing permanent versus temporary or leased capacity, and also how we would think about providing a new school versus an annex. In terms of underutilization, it does reiterate the five-year moratorium on facilities closures, and it states that if finances are available and space permits in buildings, we ought to look at additional wraparound services to put in those buildings, including student-based health centers, early childhood centers, parent universities, and expansions of space for counseling services and other programs. It also talks about increased inclusion of our diverse learners. We believe that our diverse learners should have meaningful access to core curriculum and receive high-quality instructional resources and appropriate supports and services in a least restrictive environment. And it calls for us, over a period of years, to take a close look at our cluster programs, to identify opportunities to bring those students closer to their homes and in more inclusive environments. This does not suggest that we will not have cluster programs going forward, but it may be that we have more right now than we would a few years from now. The plan also expresses a preference for certain grade structures, and not all of our, our schools today meet these preferences, but it does state a general preference for pre-K through 8 elementary schools and grades 9 through 12 high school environments. And where we have exceptions right now, it's typically in two cases. One is where we've created a middle school to relieve overcrowding at the elementary school level, and the other is where it's an option for parents to enter into rather than a progression through their neighborhood schools. And we'll look over time to identify opportunities to bring more of our schools into K-8 or pre-K to 8 structures. Now, getting to these aspirations is going to be challenging. When we look across the district at the current state of repair and the cost to improve it, the numbers are large. We've estimated that the cost to repair what's broken across our district right now, or what could use improvement, is $3.5 billion. That's just our assessments alone. The need has been estimated by our Facilities Department to grow at a rate of about $300 million a year. If you don't do work, that's how much more hap, how much the number gets larger, and that doesn't include the cost of desired improvements. Overcrowding, based on last year's 20th-day enrollment numbers, we had 81 overcrowded schools if you just look at the permanent capacity. Now, we have provided mobile units and leases for a number of our schools to make those conditions better. If you adjust for those factors, it was 49 schools. And we've heard from the community that our space utilization standards don't always accurately reflect the space concerns of buildings. Some would suggest that the numbers ought to be higher than that. And there are other schools not included within those numbers that are on a trajectory toward overcrowding. In terms of access, I mentioned the misbalance between supply and demand for our selective enrollment schools. We had also observed that there were certain areas of our community that did not have as many selective enroll, as many programs such as IB and STEM programs. As part of the school actions process last year, we invested heavily on the south and west sides in order to begin to address that, investing at the time of our announcement, I believe, 17 new programs. I think a few additional programs have since been announced. It's going to be a focus of our continuing work going forward to evaluate where there remain gaps. For the breakdown on the cost to maintain and improve our buildings over time, I mentioned the $3.5 billion in maintenance and repair. If we were to provide air conditioning for all of our buildings, it's a wide range on how much that would cost depending on how we would choose to address it. In our welcoming schools, we put in window air conditioning in the classrooms. That would be about $160 million. To do full dehumidification, which is the number that's shown here, is $1.35 billion, that or full air conditioning, full central air, would do more because it would help to cool gymnasiums and auditoriums and hallways, not just the classrooms. Modernizing labs is about $540 million, playgrounds $26.5 million, ADA accessibility, and this is not full ADA, just the code required if we were to make other improvements, another $700 million. And overcrowding relief has a big range because it highly varies depending on how you choose to solve it. We've listed here as $500 million to $3 billion. All told, the need is much higher than $3.5 billion in order to deliver everything that we would like to deliver over the 10-year period. And our pace to do it is going to be highly limited by our current financial challenges. We have a budget deficit right now that approaches $1 billion a year. It is long-term, it is structural, and as a result, right now, we've got capital budgets for the next five years that are in the neighborhood of $200 million. Remember, the need grows at a rate higher than that. So we, as a district, are going to have to continue to pursue additional funding, and I hope that our communities, I hope that our constituents can join us in working with the state and others to try to provide more relief to the district so that we can improve at a more rapid pace. So next steps for us include updating our projections based on 20th-day enrollment and the result of the ongoing assessment process. We'd like to continue to collect feedback from the public, from community groups and elected officials, and we'll be announcing a process for that in the coming weeks. And we'd like everybody to join us to continue to seek funding to accelerate our pace of improvement.
Questions for?
Where are we getting our demographic information from? Is that just internally, or are we using other external partners, folks like CMAP and others that might also provide us?
So we've received information from two groups that we've contracted with, one of which is Esri, which has helped a number of other districts in terms of their demographic projections.
Todd, I really appreciate the greater detail in the final, in the final plan, and I did, did two or a few schools and just had some, some questions. On the mobile units, where we, you know, tried to use mobile to alleviate overcrowding, at least in the schools that I visited, the mobiles were 10 to 15 years old. How do we embed that kind of factor into sort of assessing the overcrowding situation at specific schools? Does that affect their, you know, the numerical outcome of the analysis?
So that is a factor that we consider when assessing the different schools, is the age of the mobile units and also the number that are out there right now. We do have some schools right now that may have multiple different locations to which a parent may need to send children, and that is one of the things that we do, that does concern us.
Okay. And whether I, and maybe this is unique, although I think it was in the document a little bit, things like where you've had to take lunchrooms to provide class space. Is that, I mean, how do we embed factors like that into the thinking?
Yeah, so, so that, that is a factor, and we also have some schools out there that don't even have cafeterias or auditoriums, and that's another factor that also needs to be considered, and isn't something that necessarily gets reflected when one just looks at utilization rates. So there are a number of factors that need to be considered, and we've tried to include those factors in the text of the plan itself.
Should that, you said something like, should that be on the 21st-century learning environment list? I mean, like, you know, lunchroom, would that be a worthwhile, you know, addition? I don't know, I just question that looking down the, the other items.
I think that's a good push.
Yeah. Sorry, not to dominate, but the, the other question is, just on the technology piece, obviously, we talk about it a lot. Is that, is the, is, and I appreciate there's a lot of variability across the district in terms of broadband, Wi-Fi, et cetera, and its reliability. Is, is that, is the ability to have everybody on equal footing there, is that embedded in the, in the cost number you all have back here, or is that an incremental?
That's incremental.
Okay.
Okay. Todd, I just wanted to ask you something. I was looking at page eight, which talks about expansion of high-quality options, and especially under selected enrollment schools. My question to you is, Deborah and I, and so have Henry, visited the South Side High School, selected enrollment high schools, and one of the things we find that is the overcrowdedness of the high schools that are up north and downtown, they're not being experienced at the South Side High Schools. So I want to know, what do we have planned to support those high schools, which, if we could get the population into those, I think we could relieve some of the overcrowdedness that we have at Whitney Young and Peyton and some of the others. So what do you plan to do to help support the South Side selected enrollment high schools?
Yeah, as we met with communities, we heard a lot from schools on the south side, particularly on the southwest side, about a, not having the selective enrollment options that they wanted close to them. We heard about students that were traveling two hours to get to selective enrollment schools. So we'll be exploring alternatives to add additional capacity in that part of the city. Hopefully, that will also help to a better balance, supply and demand, across the district, and draw more students into those areas where we have some room in our schools.
Wait a minute. I just, I didn't understand what you, I'm just not clear on what you just said.
So I may, I may not have been clear about your question, but...
I was asking, what are we doing to help promote the South Side selected enrollment high schools? Because definitely, is that in this plan? Definitely.
So the existing selective enrollment high schools that are in the south side, we, so we don't have anything in the plan right now, but that is something that we could consider as part of our continued improvement of the plan. In addition, what we have heard, when I've been out in the community, is that there are some areas of the city that would like for there to be more selective enrollment seats available to them. In particular, I had heard that when I was on the southwest side of Chicago, and that was what I thought your question was asking.
David? Yes?
Just following on Mahalia's point. Yeah, there are two different issues. One, you've just addressed, which is new selective options, and I think what my experience with Mahalia when we were in the south side was that some of the selective schools are not in the south side, are not keeping the best students there. So some of those students are going, as you were suggesting, traveling long distance to go to Peyton or to go to Whitney Young. And so, if those schools were strengthened more in the south side, you wouldn't have this overcrowding of students moving north. Do I understand correctly the point?
Absolutely.
So that's what she's referring to, and those investments are going to be cheaper investments that, to make those, some of those schools more attractive, make sure they have good leadership, than creating more space and overcrowding. The presumption is students would prefer to stay closer to home if those selective schools were strong. Just calling something a selective school doesn't necessarily mean that all selective schools are equally strong.
Thank you.
Just had another question. I've heard mention of the regions and the names of the regions we use to talk about geography, and sometimes labels are just for reference purposes and are helpful, and sometimes labels can be interpreted as exclusive or exclusionary. Can you just give some thought on the labels we're using for the regions and why, you know, you don't see every Chicago neighborhood's named, mentioned in the plan so that folks don't feel left out, or just give me your thoughts on how we ended up where we ended up?
Yeah, so, just for purposes of analysis, we, well, and because it was required by law, we needed to identify some community areas. We had thought about using the 70-plus neighborhoods that exist within the City of Chicago. That seemed a bit unwieldy, and a lot of those neighborhoods had been developed before the highways were developed. And so, we had worked with our IGA Department, our, which is our Governmental Affairs Department, and also our Family and Community Engagement Group, to try to identify some more broad areas just for purposes of analysis. And we had 30 geographic areas that had been listed, both in the draft and in the final version of the plan, and they received names that represented at least one of the geographies within that area. They don't necessarily list every neighborhood, but each neighborhood is contained within one of those 30 community areas.
Thank you.
So Todd, I want to circle back a little bit to what Dr. Heinz and Dr. Beenan were talking about, because I think it relates to a separate issue. Because the plan is aimed at addressing a broader time period and doesn't speak to specific steps necessarily, I think a question that's going to come up is, how are we going to prioritize? What is the process for prioritizing and making decisions, given the limited resources that we have about what we're going to do? Because that's really what Dr. Heinz and Dr. Beenan were talking about. Are you going to build a new school, or are you going to beef up and improve the existing schools that we have, selective enrollment schools that we have, to make them competitive so that the seats that we have are being used? How are we going to decide which overcrowded schools are we gonna, are we going to address? Which additions are the ones we're going to go to first? What's the process for getting down to the specifics as we go under this plan? Because those are the questions I think we're going to get and that people are interested in hearing, and I know, you know, we will have a process.
Yeah. So we've provided directional guidance with respect to the guidelines... So we've provided directional guidance with respect to the guidelines that are newly disclosed and in the plan. We do expect that when we get 20th day enrollment this year, the year following, the year after, any sort of prioritization would have to be nimble and change. In addition, our financial outlook may change. Right now, we have budgeted in our five-year capital plan $20 million per year for overcrowding relief, which is essentially enough for one new annex, if we were to use it on permanent construction. So this is going to have to be a fluid conversation, both as to the finances that we have available and what implications that has for the pace at which we can provide the improvement. I think we need to have a conversation about how best to allocate that money and to seek outside support, some of which we've already received, in order to fund additional improvements. And sometimes when we get outside money, it is attached to particular improvement opportunities or areas of the city, which can lead to some changes in prioritization, which makes it very difficult to just come up with a list right now and say, we're going to tick down this list. It's going to have to be fluid.
Thank you.
So, and I appreciate the fluidity of the argument. Things change, sometimes outside money, non-public money can help. But I do want to suggest that the budget constraints, as we all know, are not going to go away. And thus, on the capital spending side, the numbers that you've put forward, Todd, are so daunting that you're, you know, we've been spending something like $200 million, which doesn't even keep us even to the 300 that you estimate, which I think is a reasonable estimate, of where you need to go just to stay in the same place without making improvement. So it suggests to me that there's some very hard prioritization on the capital budget side, that, I mean, personally, I would rather see overcrowding dealt with than air conditioning put everywhere. That's a terrible trade-off, but it's a trade-off. And you have to decide, when you don't have enough money, what your priorities are going to be. I mean, unless you get very lucky, which I'm not a believer in manna from heaven, I, it may have worked in biblical times, I haven't seen it lately. So that, those are very tough choices, but inside these budgetary constraints, those choices are going to have to be made. I'm preaching to the choir, I know.
Yeah.
So, Todd, could you specifically expound a little bit more on like, how are we going to do this prioritization? You know, is there going to be a public list that you, you put out there for public comment and have hearings, or what do you envision is going to be the process?
Well, we're going to take continued feedback on the guidelines that were expressed. We'll refresh the numbers once we have 20th day enrollment and have a number of, you know, community dialogues within the, specifically in overcrowded communities in order to get to a continued feel of how we ought to prioritize. We'll hear today from several overcrowded school communities, I think, today, that come out on very different sides of issues as to where they should fall on the priority list.
Right. I mean, I know it happens informally, and frankly, I think some of the funds you're referring to are state funds that are specifically tied to capital improvements and in certain cases tied to address overcrowding. And frankly, that's a different discussion that community members need to go and direct to state representatives and state senators and the governor's office about what they'd like to see those funds be and where they'd like them spent. So, I mean, is that what you were alluding to? Okay.
Yeah.
David, I just think it's important, Todd, so I'm just going to say this, I think, I'm just going to pull together what I think you're hearing here. I think, we think it's important to have some transparency around whatever process we're going to create. Because we have limited resources, we have big need, limited resources, and as everybody here has said, we have to make some tough choices. So I think what we're trying to say to management is, we have got to put together a process that has some transparency so people can see how we're, what the difficult decisions we're making are and how we are going about making them. So I just want to be very clear about that because I don't know that that's, people are getting that. And there's a real concern around it, and I think the board is trying to tell you, to tell your team that whatever we do, we've got to give some transparency to it.
Ditto. Got it. Thank you.
So, you know, just to remind everybody, there is an annual capital budgeting process that we go through that needs to be, that ultimately comes here for approval. And I think what you're hearing is that, and that has public hearings, by the way, historically. But I think what you're hearing up here is that we need to beef up the front end of the public hearing and transparency on that process that frankly currently exists in the future, given the challenges of prioritization and of stuff. I think we all realize that some money comes from the outside that is actually focused. And, and, you know, we have to spend it where, in fact, it, the source, where the source tells us to have to spend it or not have it. So some, sometimes we don't have discretion. We get that. I think some people are confused by TIF money, that it in fact can walk anywhere it wants to in the city. But as we know, it can't. It, it is generated in a certain geography and for the most part is intended to stay in that geography. So we understand, I think, the constraints of some of the decision-making. On the other hand, I think what you're hearing is that more transparency than we've had historically, which we've had, but more is probably going to be required in future capital making decisions. If I summarized that correctly--
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thanks.
But I, you know, there's one thing I want to make sure is clear, because I think it's fairly important, and it, and it came up in at least one of the community sessions that I attended, that you held out there in the marketplace of our citizenry about these issues. And that is that, that there is a set of policies about how the system will be run, class size, grade structure, in other words, K to eight primarily versus middle school structure and so forth and so on, that are explicitly stated in the plan and that actually are important in defining the future facility needs of the district. And in the session, the one I'm thinking of that I sat in, there was a lot of discussion about the policy issues. In other words, how, should class size be smaller or bigger? Should we have a different grade structure for schools? You know, and people feel reasonably passionate about those things. Did that feedback come back to you, come back to the management so that they understood what people were saying? And were the ultimate determinations that were made on the policy structures that were used to define the future needs, in, in those conversations, were management focused on those policy structures primarily because they believed they were the right educational policies, or were they in fact heavily influenced by finances as you looked forward? Can you comment on that? You understand what I'm asking?
I'm not sure that I do.
Well, what I'm saying is, we, you know, you remember one of these sessions I was at, there was a lot of debate about the policy of class size and, and, and school structure. And, you know, some people believe that, you know, there ought to be middle schools and so forth and so on. Those, those are big implications on a facilities plan, right? In the plan that you've given us, you've articulated, you know, the district's view of the response to that. Class size will be what it is today. We will primarily focus on the, on the grade structure that we have today. In other words, that feedback didn't result in much changes from where we have today. And I'm asking if that feedback came back to your management discussions--
Yeah.
--and you determined to stay where we are because it's the belief of the management that that's the best educational structure--
With, with respect to middle schools, there's a belief that the grade structure that we've articulated is a better grade structure for academic reasons. With respect to class sizes, the plan is relatively silent on ideal class sizes. It does not suggest a change. That is largely driven by the financial situation that we're in right now.
Okay. All right. Okay. Other questions for Todd about the plan? Comments? Thank you very much, not only for presenting today, but for all of the time you spent out listening to people, because I know it was extensive having joined you on some of that. And I appreciate your, you and all of the management for putting the plan together. It's a lot of hard work.
Thank you, and thank you for your feedback today.
Yeah, it's the first time around, and so we know the first time we do something like this, it's always not final. And so we appreciate the fact that it will be a living document, that as we learn more, it will in fact get modified. And we appreciate the work.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Okay. James, we have a policy matter you want to address?
Yes, sir, we have one policy, 13-0925-PO1. And this is the policy to rescind the current board report governing information technology. The current board report is 040825-PO3. We will rescind that report and adopt, adopt a new information security policy. This policy is being replaced with a new policy that adopts the federal information system security standard as the basis for all information security and privacy controls used throughout the district. This new policy authorizes the chief information officer to issue district-wide security requirements and control measures that align with the federal standard and provides the chief information officer with flexibility to reissue specific security requirements as needed and as the new technologies emerge. This allows us to be more responsive and resilient to day-to-day and general responses or needs throughout the system. The CEO recommends adoption of this proposed policy.
Any questions about the new policy for many of the board members? Okay. Thank you, James.